Good evening. I'd like to call tonight's work session to order for August 8th at 5:01 PM. I'll turn it over to Dr. Spence for items of information.
We'll start with Ms. Cody with the mileage rate discussion.
Okay. So first up, we have the five-year tax digest. I've put in the tentative placeholder mileage rate of 15.15, since that's what we talked about at the last meeting. Just to kind of recap, the digest went up 6.4% this year. And if you remember, we adopted a budget based on an estimated 4.5% increase. So, and that was with a quarter of a mil reduction, so the actual digest came in a little bit higher than what we budgeted. This next page is the rollback rate, which once again, I just kind of put this in as a placeholder. The rollback rate came in at 14.455. And then I thought we would just kind of go over the different scenarios. So this first scenario is the a quarter of a mil reduction, which would put it at the 15.15. At that rate, we would advertise an increase in tax of 4.81%. And then we would have additional revenue of $655,400. So overall, our revenues would exceed our expenditures, $1,863,200 at a quarter of a mil. And then next, if we look at the half a mil, so that would make, have the rate set at 14.9. Our revenues would decrease $955,100. We would advertise a 3.08% tax increase. And overall, our revenues would exceed our expenditures by $252,700. Moving on to a three-quarter of a mil decrease. We would advertise a 1.35% tax increase. And our revenues would decrease $2,565,600, which overall, our expenditures would exceed our revenues by $1,357,800. And then lastly, we have the rollback rate, which would be 14.455. That's decreasing almost a full mil. Of course, at that point, we would be advertising a 0% tax increase. And our revenues would be decreased $3,821,800, which overall, our expenditures would exceed our revenues, $2,614,000. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Even at the 15.15, that's the lowest the mileage rate has been in the last 25 years, only looked back to 1999. And just also to kind of refresh your memory too, in fiscal year '23, we reduced the mileage rate a little over a half a mil, .507. And then last year, we reduced it a quarter of a mil.
I would love to see this put in the news and said how you said it. And let people know that we're doing what we're supposed to do and spending correctly. What it looks like and what it really is is different.
Right.
If it's unexplained in English, people are going to think everything's going up and that's fine.
Right.
Think some good advertisement on that would be a good idea.
Any questions for Ms. Cody?
Just be careful what you say though, because you know, the budget has grown exponentially since, in the last 20 years too. You know what I mean? It's grown from, when it wasn't our first start, 110 million or something, I don't know if I remember, but. So we have, you know, with the tax increases. I understand what you're saying for sure, but.
Any question for Ms. Cody, and then we'll talk about the mileage rate hearings, because we have time before we actually decide this.
So I have the timeline up next. We would have to adopt a tentative mileage rate at the next board meeting on the 13th. We run our first ad on August 15th, a second ad on the 21st. Then we would have two public hearings on August 22nd, one at 12 and one at 6. And then a third on the 29th at 12, where we would officially adopt the mileage rate.
Any questions?
The 29th is when you plan on doing the adoption afterwards?
I have to push it out that long, because there has to be a certain distance between the ads and the meetings and then the two ads.
But we would actually vote on 29th?
Now, and whatever we set the tentative rate at when I advertise it, if we want to adopt something different, we have to start the whole advertising process over again.
So on Tuesday, that is the 13th Tuesday, again, so on Tuesday, we just need to figure out where we want to be.
Right.
And if we drop back and punt at any point, it just extends this.
Right. So the rate we advertise, we really need to plan on adopting that rate, or we just have to start the advertising process over.
All right. We will move on to Mr. Blackaby with the facilities update.
Give you a quick rundown through the projects where we stand right now. East Plots Projects, St. Simons Elementary, the construction renovations there. We have occupied, the first day of school, we've occupied the newly renovated classrooms in the old 1943 building. Again, as you heard in previous board meetings, the only outstanding thing we're going to have was the cafeteria, the dining area, the kitchen's operational. The roof trusses and that's just the money approved for that last month. The trusses have been installed, the roof is on, and now we're, we've moved to the inside to do the finish work, the ceilings and the floors and finish the wall finishes. So we are definitely on track to make sure that's completed by Labor Day, so that the students can occupy the dining area at St. Simons. And then there's also still some ongoing site work. We've been working around weather and around traffic to make sure we get that accomplished. But everything is operational at the school at this point, again, except for the actual dining area and cafeteria. At Satilla Marsh, we've occupied the entire building there. Everything is fully operational. We are running through punch list items and correcting anything that needs to be done due to the renovation and construction there. But again, everything is occupied and operational at Satilla Marsh. At Goodyear, the gym renovation we did there, same thing we've complete there. And actually, we've essentially completed the punch list items on that too. So the new floor, the interior finishes, the roof and the wall panels, that's all completed at the Goodyear Gym. And then a minor thing we had, which was the Greer intercom and fire alarm, that's complete and operational for the start of the school as well. One of the big ones outstanding is still Glendale Elementary and the site, as we've talked about there. We do have our second opinion on the wetlands. It was much more favorable this time, and we have now submitted that to the Corps of Engineers for approval. And we do have a plot of land that we have overlaid a site plan for a new school. And we do have the land available for that. We'd have to do a little maneuvering around. But we'd still need to wait and see what comes back from the Corps of Engineers for their approval before we can move forward with anything there. Any questions on the East Plots project?
So you said it came back favorable. I know initially the site was purchased for two schools, and then we went, oh, can we put one school?
It's still one school.
One school?
Yeah.
But we were even iffy on one school.
Right.
That's a discussion, so.
Out of the 50-some odd acres, around 40 acres were deemed wetlands on the first pass. When we had the survey done again and submitted again, it came back that there was, I think it's 15 acres. So it decreased a considerable amount. It still has to do with the placement of the wetlands, and there's still some that's on the front side of the school. And I think somebody mentioned one other time that, you know, it may be a situation where it's kind of like an overflow point, where we have a wetlands area out front and the school kind of in behind it. And have to, you know, maneuver our parking lots and driveways around that. But as far as a second school site on that plot of land is going to be difficult, particularly if we were looking at a middle school with athletic fields and all the other items that come along with that.
And St. Simons, you said the dining area is not usable right now?
Right. That's where we had to replace the roof trusses.
You may have said this, but where are the students?
We're delivering the lunches to the cath, in the commons areas and into the classrooms.
That's going to last how long?
We, we're can, assuming Labor Day is drop dead date for that, if not before. And we're moving pretty quickly now, because it's all dried in. We're not dealing with weather. That was, that was our biggest issue towards the end of summer, we're dealing with the weather. Weather's not an issue anymore. All the work is contained inside.
Can I just ask, on the Glendale site, that would be 15 acres that are usable or 15 not?
No, no.
Okay, just want to make sure.
But again, the kind of, that's where it is right now. Again, the Corps of Engineers has to approve this. They've got all the surveys stuff, so they may, they may come back and tell us we have to do it again. So, but that's where we stand right now. But the placement of those wetlands, where they are, they're not just isolated in one corner. So it kind of makes it a little more tricky.
Okay, thank you.
And just from a local capality standpoint, the board renovation, we are progressing there. The metal studs are installed. We're working on the electrical rough end. Duct work is being installed. The roof work is nearing completion over the wing. As you can see, we boxed in these windows up here, which is something we need to do to get our plumbing and electrical down the hallway. Work is progressing there. We're a little bit behind schedule. A lot of that primarily due to weather on the roof that we dealt with over the end of the summer. But also, many of our subs that were working on this project were working at Satilla Marsh and St. Simons as well. So we made sure we focused on the schools rather than on this project at this time. Any questions? As far as the Goode report, I've already covered the project portion of that. But we usually report out on our collections. So this is our June collection, which is actually, I mean, our July report out here, which is actually our end of June collections. You can see we were at 3.4 million. That's 100,000 over the previous June collections. Still tracking, on target, just above where we had.
When does it end? When's it all over? Is it, I mean, is it done now, or is it, we've still got to go through?
Yeah, so we have reached that we have to end on a quarter.
Right.
You don't end monthly, you end on a quarter. And the end of the next quarter is the end of October, right?
September. It'll be September collections that we were seeing.
In September, we, it could have been cut off prior, but the state, it's on the state to inform. Inform us when to cut that off. They did not make the cutoff, so it runs through the next quarter.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Blackaby? Thank you, sir. Sunbelt staffing, Mr. Benson?
Whoop, I think I closed the wrong tab. I messed you up.
It's okay.
You should be good, you should be.
It's all right. Good evening. We have a request from our special education department to provide deaf and hard of hearing services for a student in our school system. And so we are requesting the use of sunbelt staffing to provide those services as required by that student's ID. We have a RFP with them, and so we're just asking for this to be included as part of that.
That seems like an issue you don't have to ask a school group for. That's me.
Yeah. Truthfully, we're just trying to do what that student needs, absolutely, sir.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Is it high quality? Yes, sir. Our principals have been happy with those. We've been very pleased with that. We wish we could just hire them outright and not have to go through the, but there has to be that year of separation. So those employees have to make that decision.
Mr. Benson, classroom cameras.
So happy first day of school, everyone.
The Glen County Schools has used radio surveillance for quite a while to monitor the safety and security of our students and staff. And we have historically done this primarily in our buildings and on our buses. But about a year ago, we met with a company, Cloud 12, and we began to explore the idea of monitoring our classrooms. At this time in Georgia right now, one in five school districts have classroom cameras. And so we began to look at and think about how we could use classroom cameras to help not only protect our students' safety and our teachers, but also have some instructional value. So we started a pilot at Brunswick High. We put 10 classroom cameras in, and we placed those cameras primarily in ninth grade freshman classrooms. And we kind of looked at, and we met with the Brunswick High teachers and staff periodically to see how things were going. And so as part of that last year, what we heard was fewer disciplinary issues, because students felt like somebody was actually watching. The other thing that we heard was the turnaround time on disciplinary referrals was much shorter, meaning school administration could go and look at the camera and see exactly what happened, rather than having to go through and interview student after student after student. So we were processing referrals at a quicker, timely manner. From a staff perspective, we heard staff say that they felt like the classroom camera helped prevent false accusations and kind of save their reputation. So they were feeling pretty good about what was going on. And so based upon that data and those meetings that we had with those teachers, we looked at what it would take to do full implementation. And so I'm here tonight to report that we have finished Brunswick High. We've placed a classroom camera in all classrooms, which meant that it was 100 different locations. And we are moving right along with Glen Academy. On a daily basis, our SROs will monitor our regular building cameras. So they will look at the exterior and interior of our buildings. And as part of that monitoring process, they're looking for, to make sure things are going as we would expect, but just to also make sure our cameras are fully functional. Our classroom teachers and our school administrators are monitoring our classroom cameras. So they're going in and making sure those devices are also working.
Didn't K-12 say they had some way to help us too there?
Correct. So they will, they have a system that if something is not functional with a classroom camera, that sends an alert basically to the teacher and administrator that camera's out. The cameras that we are buying have a five-year warranty. And we have checked with some of our neighboring school divisions who have also partnered with Cloud 12, and the feedback was really good. The classroom cameras that we are using have some pretty good capabilities. So I've listed a couple of those here today. They are live footage, and we can record that. And it does include audio. So when I talk to you about, you know, he said versus she said, we can go back and listen as to what exactly was said, which is also helping us in terms of everyone. The access for our classroom cameras starts with the teacher. The teacher has access to the instructional side. And they are able to invite school administration in, and they are also able to invite other co-teachers in. So if they work with a special education teacher or an ESOWA teacher in their classroom, they also give access. But we felt it was important for the teacher to kind of make, start with that level of control. As we met with teachers, there certainly was some feeling that maybe Big Brother was watching. And we tried to kind of help them with that in giving them full control of the classroom camera to begin with. The recordings that occur from classroom cameras go directly to the teacher's Google Drive, which they're familiar with. And they're stored there for 14 days unless a teacher decides to go ahead and save that clip, thinking they would like to use that for something later on. So sometimes teachers teach a really great lesson, and they say, boy, you know, I didn't think the lesson was going to go this way, but I'd like to be able to share, save that lesson and share it with my colleagues or share it with other students. So students that are absent can go back and watch the recordings as well. We felt like that was making teachers' jobs a little bit easier. There are two streams that come off of the Cloud 12 classroom camera. There is the instructional stream, which I've talked to you about, and that is the stream that the teacher has control of. And then there's the security stream. The instructional stream recordings are set by the teacher. So the expectation for our teachers is that when you are providing instruction, that the instructional stream is going. We don't expect teachers, and they can set the specific times for that. So when teachers are having planning or department meetings with their colleagues, their cameras don't necessarily need to be running. But when there are students there and they're providing instruction, we expect the cameras to be going. The security stream is running 24/7. Okay, so the instructional stream stops at the end of the day. The security stream keeps going. So if we ever had to go back into a classroom and look at, let's just say, items came up missing after hours, we could go back in and take a look at that. That security stream is accessed by district administration and school administration. And really, that stream is only accessed when there's been a vent or something's happened that requires an investigation, that somebody would have to go back and look at that. And they've notified that the teacher, the classroom teacher, that they're going to do that. It has come up regarding teacher observations, okay? We are not using classroom cameras for teacher observations, okay? Meaning, the school administrator is still expected to go into the classroom and conduct the observation as we normally would have done so. We feel like that's valuable feedback for our teachers, and we really don't want to get into the practice of just watching the teachers perform based upon the camera. The pictures on the slide there show you a little bit of what those two streams look like. So the top quad view is the classroom instructional stream. You can see there's four different views that come with that. And we've said it right now, that one of the views goes really to the electric, the Promethean, the panel that's located at the front. So the teacher is capturing that. So if they do decide to go back and use that for, with a student or for other purposes, they have that recording of what the notes were for that day and kind of what was being shown. The teacher can go in and kind of select the other views that they would like to show based upon where that teacher normally stands and kind of delivers instruction. The bottom view, the fisheye view, is really that 360 degrees where you can see what's going on. And that's really more so used for the security stream. So if we need to go back and get a bigger idea of what's happening or if something has occurred, we can use that view. But I thought it was important for both of you, for you to see both of those views, what's happening. Currently, the project is being funded through East Plots III interest. Okay, so if you have questions from teachers or administrators, that's the money, the funds that we're using right now for this project.
One thing to remember is, we started off with 10 teachers that were really volunteers. We wanted to get a group of 10 that were close together. And so Mr. Benson spent a lot of time talking to them and assuring them that we weren't sitting there watching everything they did. And so once those 10 teachers used them for a while, then the other teachers started wanting them. He met with the rest of the staff at Brunswick High School, and there was really no pushback. And then we took it to Glen Academy in the spring last year and talked to them about it, and had an open conversation with the teachers. And we had no pushback. And so I think the Glen Academy teachers wanted also. There just has to be a trust between the teachers and the administration, that you're not going to just sit there and watch that camera all day. You're not going to just sit there and watch that camera all day, which we don't have time to do that anyways as a building principal or assistant principal.
To piggyback on Dr. Spencer's comment, if a teacher's accused of something, historically, we would have had to send that staff member home. We would have conducted an investigation, and you know, all of that would have taken time. We feel like with this technology, we can kind of clear whatever somebody's accusations were that day, which that staff member can go home, rest assured that they know what they did, and we can have that right there for everybody that day. And so, you know, we've had staff members as part of our hiring process. And one of the questions that we'll get now is, do you have classroom cameras in your system? And we have felt like there are staff members that are looking for this type of technology in our schools.
Another thing to think about is if, say you have an algebra teacher that's going to be absent for four or five days, and the other algebra teacher next to or for him is on the same page, that has the ability to livestream to another classroom where the substitute can be, and that teacher can teach both classes with the substitute in the other class. And so that's something we were, Ms. Seals and I have been looking at for quite some time now.
One other thing to think about is these cameras are fully integrated with Synthegix. So if we have an episode like we did several years ago at Brunswick High, and somebody were to press the Synthegix alert, if you have the Synthegix app on your phone, you are going to be able to bring up the camera where that alert occurred. So if you think about it in terms of school safety and when there's been events that have occurred that have involved casualties, the responder is going to know what they're walking into because they're going to be able to see what's happening in that school or in that classroom. And they're going to be able to, as they respond to that location, be working on a plan rather than going to the school and then having to try to sit down and figure that out. So we really do feel like from a safety perspective, this is important.
Any questions for Mr. Benson?
Yeah, you mentioned the security stream is going to run twenty-four seven, but it's just motion activated, right?
Correct. Yes, sir. And so that's been new for our staff. We do have to make sure folks, when we've talked to other school divisions, they've had instances where sports teams have gone into a classroom and changed for the event or different things. So we've had to make our athletic teams aware that we do have classroom cameras. Yeah. Yeah, so we've had things like that come up.
Yes.
Yeah. We also need to make sure, you know, when we did this last year with the pilot, we turn off the cameras during state testing because we don't want to ever be accused of recording or being able to view things on the assessment and then having that information. So we've had to follow some different guidelines.
Yeah, I was saying more from a data story. You said they were running twenty-four seven, there's no sense in them running, you know, all night if there's nobody in there.
Exactly.
As long as it's motion activated, that's fine, it'll save space, but I don't think about the other.
Yeah. Yeah, so we've had just little things come up, but, yep.
Two questions.
Sure.
Is the audio like a two-way audio?
It is not a two-way.
So like, if there is an algebra teacher out and the next door teacher, the class with the substitute would have to ask the substitute?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then as far as the instructional stream, can the, is there a way the teacher knows who is viewing that at that time, say a kid is out or?
So they would share that with them via their Google Drive?
Right.
And they would be able to see when they accessed the video.
Okay. So they'll be able to say, okay, little Johnny's present.
Exactly.
All right.
Yeah. So you know, often when students are out, teachers are required to go back and have to make up those lessons.
Right.
This would be a way for them to be able to provide the video as a starting point for the material that they've missed.
And do I have it right that we have labeling on the classrooms?
Right, so we.
That says the cameras are.
Exactly. We are required by law to notify our guests and our students and our staff that we are having live recording going on in our buildings. And we have put those stickers on the necessary doors.
And we're notifying them right now. On YouTube.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Benson? We will start with middle schools once we finish Glen Academy.
Thank you.
Next is a MOU agreement with Coastal Plains High School. We've been doing this for years now. It's the same, basically the same agreement that we had with Coastal Plains in the years past. We just have to sign one every year. Nothing, there's nothing different about this year's agreement as opposed to last year's. Any questions there? Student attendance, Ms. Haywood.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to give you an update on our student attendance for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And. As we normally present, we'd like to break it down for you by school and based on zero days, one to five, six to nine, and ten plus. And want to tell you just a little bit about some of the initiatives and improvements that we've done this past year, and then to report to you that we've seen significant improvement as compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This past year, we partnered with the Glen County Juvenile Court, and we applied for a grant, and we had a designated staff person who works closely with our school system in addressing truancy. We also have a designated SRO that works with that individual along with our school social workers who attend truancy court on a regular basis. In addition to that, our schools have been very intentional in identifying attendance and tardies as a part of their school improvement plans. And of course, one of the things that we also implemented, our high schools implemented a couple of years ago, was adding exam exemptions back as an attendance incentive. And so when we're looking at our attendance from twenty-two, twenty-three, at the high school, ten plus, ten plus absences, we were looking at forty-four percent of our students in twenty-two, twenty-three at the high school level. This year, we're looking at thirty-two percent. We saw a significant decrease. Brunswick High in twenty-two, twenty-three had fifty-two point seven percent of their kids missing ten or more. This year, they're at thirty-five point zero seven. Glen Academy was at thirty-five in twenty-two, twenty-three, and now they're at thirty percent. And so overall, as a district, we've seen a significant decrease in the number of students that are missing ten or more. And I know it goes back to making that as a focus to make sure that students are coming to school, to make sure that we're also optimizing instruction, making those calls to parents, and being very proactive in our approach to making sure that we are getting our kids to school. So wanted to just give you all an update on where we were with attendance for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Really feel like we're making a lot of efforts to reengage our parents since COVID and getting our students back in school. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What is it compared to years ago, ten years ago?
I don't know, but I can find out.
I'm just curious if we're, you know.
You've got to remember, ten years ago, as a high school principal, I had the authority to basically take someone's driver's license if they missed more than seven unexcused absences. We used to count that against their grade, but the state has taken that ability away from us. There's really not a whole bunch we can do once they get to high school. Given some sort of awards or test exemption seems to have helped last year.
For sure.
So just looking at middle and elementary school, we don't really see that same trend. I know we don't have exam exemptions there.
Right.
Is there anything else that we're looking at to try to mimic a similar effect?
Yes, ma'am. Well, as a matter of fact, one of the things that we did last year, we piloted a, what we call a truancy intervention at five absences. We started it at Glen Middle last year. It was kind of a bringing in a truancy panel to the school as opposed to sending parents to truancy court in an effort to try to intervene before they have to get to ten absences. And we saw a significant, if you look at Glen Middle, looking at one to five and six to nine compared to twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see that those numbers decreased. Parents being a little bit more understanding why they need to be more reengaged in school. And we find out that root causes for why absences are happening, really, there are a lot of other issues that are happening. Maybe mental health issues, it may be homelessness. There are other things that usually are going on that are happening, and so we're able to intervene with a lot of those challenges on the front end. And so we saw, and the principal at Glen Middle, Dr. Akins, reported to our group that, at the attendance, I think at the attendance and climate meeting, you were there, talked about how that had made a tremendous impact for their school. So we had a meeting actually today with Juvenile Court, looking at how we can expand that to our other middle schools, so we can see how that can help us with that. Elementary is a little bit more challenging because we're depending on parents to bring students to school. So we're really looking at ways that we can explore with state court and trying to get our kids to school.
I mean, even just at like PTA meeting or something. I mean, even at schools where, you know, it may just be a lot of it falling on the parents to say, hey, you know, this is real school already, and they need to be here in order to learn kind of things. Because I mean, I know I've had kids that age, and you do see, you know, people take kids out for vacations or something like that because they think it doesn't matter at that point. But really, when we're trying to get these kids caught up in reading levels and, you know, reading on grade level by grade three and all of that, those initiatives, days out, really do impact.
Absolutely, it does. Every instructional minute matters. And sometimes people think fifteen minutes doesn't matter, but fifteen minutes times five days is seventy-five minutes of instruction that students miss. And so we're just going to, we're just going to keep doing what we can and continue to be proactive, try to encourage our parents and working with our schools. Our schools are doing such a tremendous job of trying to engage our parents and helping them to understand the importance of instruction. And I know a lot of the things that are coming down, Ms. Miller can tell you, with a lot of the literacy laws and different things that are happening, we're even more committed to making sure we help our parents understand the importance of why our students need to be in school.
Do we still do a meeting with the parents?
Yes, ma'am.
At the lower grades?
Yes, ma'am. So because of compulsory attendance, we make sure that we have a meeting at five. Our compulsory attendance says that we have to do that by five, but we as a district at ten is when we do truancy. But yes, we have to make two attempts to have meetings with parents. We're also utilizing email as a way of communicating with parents as well. Also utilizing our, now we'll be using Parents Square, but we were using one call also as another means of being able to communicate with parents and texting parents to let them know, hey, please know that we need to make sure that Johnny's at school. Did you know that, you know, sending out messages, did you know that fifteen minutes of instruction, that this could impact this and this could impact that? So, yes, ma'am.
So you believe that us reaching out to the parents at the absent has made a difference, a significant difference?
I do.
With the elementary, because it's still the parents and getting the children to school?
Sometimes I just don't think people realize just how much a few minutes means over time. You know, pennies make dollars. And sometimes we just don't realize how much of an impact that makes over time. But again, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are making that message clear and, again, engaging our parents as much as possible to ensure they understand the importance of attendance at school.
And if I could just follow up with, when we have our SRO sit in on those five-day meetings, which they're required to do now, it makes a tremendous impact. And a lot more support, you know, for the school system. And parents realize that this is law, you know, and there's somebody from law enforcement here that's going to enforce it if I don't start bringing it. So that's been a big help.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blackaby, Google Workspace.
This is a recommendation approval to renew our subscription, our annual subscription to Google Workspace for education. This is essentially all of our Google tools that the teachers use in whether our email, Google Drive, Google Classroom, all of those tools. And again, this is part of a three-year agreement, agreement. Our price doesn't change for three years, and this is the second year of that agreement. And the recommendation is purchased off of the state contract from CDW for sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Any questions?
I'm just seeing the student number there.
So, yes. So last year, we tried, we whittled the number down to get it closer to what our true enrollment number is, and we wound up having to buy more in the middle of the year. What occurs is, as students leave, we don't immediately withdraw them from this because within a month, a lot of times, they come back. So we leave them sitting there for several weeks. Or, you know, they'll withdraw from one school, and we think they're gone from the system, and then they show up, you know, at another school, you know, three or four weeks later. So we leave them, we leave them in there. So we have to have the additional license in order to do that. And last year, we undercut ourselves and had to buy some more licenses in the middle of the year.
Which might be more expensive if they come back.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because you have to come back and start the process, so yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see, the Glen Brunswick nine-one-one agreement. So years ago, when we ran fiber throughout the county, the county came off of our fiber and they allowed us for that to use their GCIC and their nine-one-one emergency center and use their radios. And this is kind of explained there. I don't know if I can get my stuff up there. Anyway. About six months ago, they called me and said that they no longer were going to do it for free. So they've been doing it for free for fifteen or more years. And so now it's going to cost us about ninety, ninety-five thousand to use their system. But that's the same system that the State Patrol is on, Glen County Police, Brunswick Police, the college, the hospital, all of those folks are on that, on that system. And so that's what they're asking us to do, is sign a contract to join in with them. And we would basically pay our proportional share of what it would cost. Our proportional share would be around ninety, ninety-five thousand for a certain amount of radios. So we're paying for a certain amount of radios. Right now, we have twenty-six SROs, and thirty SROs would be ninety-five thousand. So it would be less than that.
We discussed this a little bit, I can't, last week or maybe it was the last meeting, but if we were to buy this system on our own, it would be substantially more.
To think about the number of police officers, number of those folks that are in Glen County, we would have to buy our own.
Right. And a repeater and everything else that we talked about, which is expensive.
It would be far more expensive to do it on our own. This also gives us dispatch services should we need them, which we haven't used in the past. And we could run license plates. We could say that, you know, be on the lookout for this person if we have a missing person. And we've had to call the county or the city in the past to do that. Any questions? Moving on, you have questions?
Yeah, sure. Maybe, are they still on our fiber? Are they still?
Okay, they're not actually, so they cut into our fiber, yes. So they're not actually running our fiber. What we have is if our fiber tears up, we're responsible for fixing our fiber. If their fiber tears up, they're responsible for fixing their fiber. If where it joins tears up, then we both take the cost. That's the agreement we have. And really and truly, there was never an agreement back in the day other than a handshake agreement. When it happened, we couldn't find anything where they agreed to let us use their service for free. They just did. It was kind of a handshake agreement between the superintendent, whoever that was at the time, and the county manager.
But they tied into our fiber because they didn't want to run their own.
That's right.
It didn't make sense to run their own. Like, we had fiber that stopped at the causeway.
That's right.
They tied into our fiber to get across the causeway. So they have to run it from the nine-one-one center. I'm just hypothetically, from the nine-one-one center to the causeway, substantial dollar amount.
Right. That's correct. But if you figure, we, say ninety thousand dollars times fifteen years, you know, that's getting on up there too for what they've given us for free.
Sure.
You know, I've talked to Mr. Fallon about it.
You know, I mean, it's just one of those things. It's kind of like when we deal with the city sometimes, where it's like, we're going to charge you two hundred thousand dollars for a piece of property that's not valuable to anybody except for us. You know, it's just.
I think they're being fair to us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Staff attendance, Ms. Seals.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy first day of school again. I'm delighted to present the staff attendance to you tonight. Delighted because we've, our staff attendance improved last school year over the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Last school year, we did ask schools to think about incentives to support staff coming to school. And also too, from my level, I started sending out quarterly letters to staff members. That was interesting. And so that definitely impacted that as well, too. So I'm delighted to say that it did improve in every area or state, the same overall. I have to say that one of the biggest or the most positive impacts on staff attendance is school climate and culture. You know, when teachers feel good about coming to school, they come to school. And so I'm hoping that this continues to be an upward trend where we see our staff attendance improve. And we know that there are things that come up, and we want our staff members, if they're sick, you know, stay home. But, you know, if you can be at work, we definitely want. But, you know, if you can be at work, we definitely want them to be at work. So, I'm happy to say that our overall attendance at each level has either improved or stayed the same.
What's, um, what's going on with us doing?
You know what, it's funny you say that. Ms. Miller and I talked about that as well.
And they're supposed to want it double. You know, the ten plus days and so.
And when I looked at their attendance last year for their ten or more, it's exactly the same.
And all the teachers have kids and they have.
Everybody does, yes.
And all that kind of stuff too. I'm just curious. If there was something in particular that you'd.
They have a very positive school culture. I have to say that. When they say Ohana, they mean that. And they definitely mean that at Golden House. And so, I have to attribute it to that.
Any other questions for Ms. Seals?
Are there truancy hearings for teachers that miss?
There are not truancy hearings. However, I have had conversations with staff members. Some of them contacted me after receiving letters and I talked to them about it. You'd be surprised how many people really went into a lot of detail as to why they had to be out. And, you know, I understand legitimate. There are legitimate reasons why some people have to be out and I made sure I supported them on those, that a year again.
You do it by a job.
I try.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, we will look at entering into executive session. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session for safety personnel legal?
The move.
Motion by Mr. Holby. Second by Ms. Gibbons. Were there any other? No, okay. I'm pretty sure before we take the vote. All right, all those in favor of entering into executive session for safety personnel illegal? Is unanimous at five forty-seven.
Second.
Mr. Edgley with a motion to return it to in session, second by Ms. Gibbons. All those are in favor of returning to open session. It is unanimous.
May I adjourn?
Six forty.
I'll second.
Mr. Jurgen is eager to adjourn and made a motion to do so with a second by Mr. Edgley. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, it's unanimous. Again, six forty.
Merci.
Thank you all.